Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown El area. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
I think we have a secret admirer.
Well, that's just what...
I think the telephone's ringing for you.
Madam Clerk?
Under appointments, at 10:15, Robert Jones, Director of E-911, will give an update to the Board and inform the public on the agency. At 10:30, Dan Bealman, Director of Lorraine County Solid Waste Management District, will update the Board and give information to the public on the district. Under resolutions, Job and Family Services bills?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Investments?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Transfers?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
There was one advance?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair? Ms. Blair?
Mobler.
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Bills?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Is there any personnel matters? There was none on the sheet?
I didn't see any on the sheet.
Number 10, under Board of Elections, authorize county auditor to create number 247 HAVA Help America Vote Act to capture Help America Vote grant funds for the upholding Board of Elections hardware and software to accommodate the statewide voter registration system.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Commissioners, number 11, instruct the clerk to advertise for food bids to be supplied to Golden Acres County Home and Lorraine County Community Base Correctional Facility. Said notice will be published in the Chronicle Telegram and Morning Journal on October 31st and November 7, 2003, and the bids will be open on Monday, November 24, 2003, at 2:00 PM in the Commissioners' Public Hearing Room.
So move.
Discussion. Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
12, dedicate the J.C. Penney Building, Broad Street, El area, Ohio, as county maintenance garage.
So move.
Could we just have a little background, Madam Chair, please?
Sure.
Mr. Cordes?
Item number 12.
J.C. Penney Building Maintenance Garage?
Well, I understand. I'm just sure of background.
I know you were writing something.
No, no, I'm not sure of background to give you. We have been using the warehouse for some time as a county warehouse for the maintenance department. We store quite a bit of equipment there, and the maintenance department parks their trucks and snow piles, salt sprays, et cetera, down there, and it was brought up that we should probably just go ahead and designate that building for them, which I find very agreeable because with the size and complexity of how the county has grown in the last two or three decades, we really do need a warehouse and a maintenance building to store our various materials and equipment in. That building was purchased back in 2000 to augment the Transportation Center building, and subsequent to that, we found that it was not actually going to be able to do so, and then we switched over to using it for maintenance. So I don't think that we have right now any other use for the building other than what we're doing with the maintenance department. So...
I guess my question was, what does it mean if we dedicate the J.C. Penney Building as the county maintenance garage? What does it mean in actuality? I mean, you're already using it that way. What is...
It just makes it official.
Well...
Why are we voting on a resolution to do something like this if you're already doing it? I think that's what... Does that make sense?
Well, I just wanted to know if in the future we decide to do something different, does this action impede that? I guess that's my question.
Well, no. I mean, you can change any building or any facility as you see fit as the Board of Commissioners to any use that you so desire at any time.
I was talking with some of the maintenance guys, and they thought what they'd like to do is section areas off so that they could have like a workshop and maybe electrical or whatever it is that they want to do in different areas of the building. So I thought it was a good idea myself, other than putting the equipment in there.
But why are we voting on a resolution to call a building dedicated for maintenance? I don't think we've ever... Have you ever done that before?
We didn't know what else to... What other word to use other than dedicate to make it official that that would be the maintenance building?
Oh, it seems odd.
If you can think of another word.
For sale.
For sale.
How about... Did you ever get it emptied out?
Well, that's a long story.
Well, I think the last instructions were pretty clear, so I thought it was empty.
They were very clear.
Okay, good.
And we were... The day that we were preparing to place the equipment onto the street, and we had it all set to go, we had given the company very final, final notices and used as... Been as generous as we could. Their creditors showed up indicating that they had some financial interest in the equipment, and I must say that that's something that you spoke to all along, but nobody came forward until the very last day. And First Merritt came forward and said they had a financial interest in the equipment and asked us not to put it on the street, so they had an opportunity to come and review what was there in the warehouse and discuss the matter. In order to be a good cooperative government with First Merritt, who has a large presence here, we've been waiting the last couple of weeks, and they've been in contact... Their attorneys have been in contact with our attorneys concerning this issue, and maybe Jerry could add some additional information. I'm not really sure.
It's just that yesterday I did make a phone call to First Merritt. I was not able to contact the person involved, but I did make a phone call asking them to update the status. I had indicated that we had waited a couple of weeks to give them an opportunity to make some kind of determination in that we were expecting a prop to answer here or we were going to proceed accordingly. So that was yesterday.
Can we ask them to...
And I heard back from them.
So we're right back to where we were from day one, which is we got a warehouse full of stuff.
Well, not necessarily. One of the things I was very fearful of was creating a tendency with First Merritt. We call this whether they had a financial interest or lean on that equipment. We did not want to create a tendency to have to go back through a court action to get them removed.
I think they'll be able to pay us, though.
Well, you get a point there, Commissioner. Somebody should be paying us. Obviously, we still have that judgment for in excess of $60,000 with the last person we had a lease with. So we haven't been able to collect on that, and one of the things I did indicate to First Merritt, if they were not timely, I expected them to execute some financial arrangement with Prosecutor's Office that didn't create that tendency, but also compensated the county while we waited for them to find a direction with that equipment. I don't know the legal nuances here, and maybe... And Jerry can speak to it better. I'm not sure now, knowing that somebody has a lean on that equipment and a financial investment in that equipment, that we can actually put it onto the street even though we have an order of eviction.
I thought we could.
We can still do that.
We can still do it.
Well, then what's the pleasure of the Board?
I don't think it's changed in the last year. I think it's been pretty consistent. Hasn't it? We've been very lenient on letting people negotiate.
You have?
And I think... I thought it was pretty clear the last time we talked about this.
I... Again, I did not indicate that your instructions were unclear.
I thought we were clear. What?
I did not indicate that your instructions were unclear.
Oh, okay.
There's two negatives there.
Okay, I was like...
I think the problem was, on the very day we were ready to go, then...
That's the day you...
Out of the blue came a possibility that might help get us some money, and we thought that was worth...
Well, we're always interested in being made.
Giving it a couple of weeks.
Oh, it's possible.
Not to mention that First Merritt is an employer in this county. They do have a presence in this county, and I didn't think it prudent to turn a blind eye that they were asking us to give them a little bit of time to deal with this issue.
I think that's a reasonable request in view of the fact that the players have changed. Reasonable. How do you define reasonable, though?
Well, what other people...
Jerry's smiling. Excuse me, Jerry's smiling.
Yeah, I don't think... Yeah. I think it's just someone's doing a crapshoot on us, and I think we just put it to the road. That's just my own personal opinion. Like, everybody knew that if it was there, we did the search, right? We did the recordings. There was no leans on the assets.
We attempted to do a state and local search on the assets per your request and your direction, yes, sir, and we were not able to find any UCC filings and so forth that would indicate vested interest in it.
My opinion is... Nothing's changed. I still say take it to the road.
Well, I agree. If they want it, they can pick it up there.
Yep.
Did you have a comment?
Are we still on number 12?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Surely are, Johnson Oberlin. In response to what word to use, may I suggest designate or recognize?
I like designate.
Same topic.
What?
Choice of words.
All right, you got a dictionary?
Choice of words is selective enforcement, blind eye. I suggest instead that we do like my neighbor down the street five doors from me happens. Court order, and we sell it at sheriff's sale. Bye.
Thanks. What the bottom line here is, there's just a bunch of equipment left behind by a previous tenant, and we just... We've been trying to deal with getting rid of it out of the building. That's what this is about, since you guys probably feel like you're in the end of a conversation.
Let me ask the Board this, so that... If First Merritt comes forward and wishes to compensate the county while they deal with the equipment issue, is the Board willing to entertain that issue?
And keep... Continue to store it?
I would say for a period certain, and they would... And we would have to have legal documents that did not create a tendency so we didn't have to go through an eviction process.
Are you suggesting that they pay for the storage?
Oh, absolutely, and I suggested that to them when they first spoke to us and wanted us to work with them, and that's why I turned it over to Prosecutor's Office to have discussion with the legal people, because actually their attorneys were the ones that contacted my office.
Here, I'll make this real simple. How's this? Since we're dealing with a bank, if they're willing to make up all the past rent that we've had since we haven't collected it, then I'm all willing to say, sure, make it up. I'm sure it's the same type of...
Rent and storage.
Yeah, so we're talking maybe about $80,000, $90,000, which I don't think they're willing to do. So if they're willing to come up with $90,000, then fine. If not, I'm kind of tired of dealing with... For two and a half years since I've been here, we've had that equipment in there, so I say take it to the road, because I don't think they're gonna... I don't think we're gonna see dime one.
I would suggest...
Because they're not gonna chase bad money after more bad money.
I would suggest if they're willing to meet the terms of the current judgment entry agreement that we have, I would be willing to consider that. It's not quite as much as you're suggesting, but it's about 70,000. I certainly don't think it would hurt us to allow them a one-week opportunity to step up to the plate.
Sounds good. I'll agree with you. Seven more days?
I think that's what they were referring to, is the past rent.
Well, I just don't think they can move that fast, but let's see what happens.
I don't think you're indicating you want them to move the equipment out that fast. You want to make sure that they're gonna give us some kind of financial incentive to not do that.
They should be able to make a decision whether or not they can make the judgment hold to retain the equipment. If not, it goes to the road.
Plus, the rent for storage.
Right. So you'll find out in a week. You'll know... You'll probably... Jerry will find out in 24 hours, probably.
Okay, is it clear?
It's clear.
Want to hold number 12 for a week?
The next time we put it on there, put designate instead of...
Okay, you withdrawing your motion?
Dedicated. Pardon me?
Dedicate.
And I'll withdraw my motion.
Under Emergency Management and Homeland Security Office, 13, authorize Tom Kelly, Director, to be authorized agent for Lorraine County Board of Commissioners for all matters as they relate to FEMA Emergency Declaration EM 3187OH. This relates to reimbursements for OT expenses that occurred during the blackout.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, approve an enter and contract between Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services and Rainbow Child Care Center, North Homestead, Ohio, for child daycare services. Site contract is effective November 1, 2003, through December 31, 2003, and maximum amount reimbursed for children enrolled in a childcare center is based on state reimbursement ceilings, which are set for the age of the child and the amount of time the child attends the center.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Accept proposal from Trisco Systems, Inc., Lorraine, Ohio, and enter into a contract in the amount of $24,865 to be paid from account 001012001440401 Capital Improvements. Trisco Systems, Inc. was the lowest and most responsive bid and will perform masonry repairs and cleaning of the Job and Family Services building. Issue notice to proceed letter effective November 3, and authorize county administrator to notify county auditor to release retained and to completion of said project.
So moved.
Second. Did you want to say something?
Discussion.
No, I was just... If there was gonna be any questions, this says that it's just the cleaning of the masonry repairs. We're actually doing all the mortar joints in the back that need fixing. That building's been subject to a lot of deterioration in the back of the mortar joints due to some water problems we've had back there, and we've also made some major drainage changes back to drain off the water better. Of course, that property's very low in comparison to the property... You remember those problems from years ago, Ms. Facy? So we're still fighting that issue, and we've had some water intrusion into the building, and we're fighting that issue, and we had some black mold issues, and we're dealing with that issue. So this is very necessary maintenance on those mortar joints back there to maintain the integrity of the facility.
Further discussion? Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under MRDD 16, authorize county auditor to create Fund 254, MRDD Capital Fund, to be used for acquisition, construction, and/or improvement of capital facilities or acquisition of capital and equipment used in providing services to the mentally retarded and developmentally disabled persons in accordance with ORC 5705.09.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, approve an enter and renewal maintenance agreement with Lorraine County Sheriff's Department and Stephen Campbell and Associates, Beachwood, Ohio, in the amount of $2,190 to be paid from account 001012301450101 Contract Services. This contract will be effective from January 1, 2004, expiring December 31, 2004, for communications equipment.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Cordes, County Minister?
Commissioners, as you know, we have been, over a period of several months, wrestling with the issue of Oracle upgrades to the county's main financial software platform, and a team of the auditor staff and the commissioner's staff have been working in cooperative effort towards seeking solutions to this problem. Yesterday, we started a phased approach to how to move into 2004 with regard to this issue, and it seemed that we had some unanimous support from all the team players with respect to a proposal that Mr. Smith is going to briefly roll out for you. I do understand that we've all had discussions individually on this issue, but I think that we should spend just a few minutes with him presenting the first phase of the alternatives to start fixing some of these difficulties we're having.
Ernie Smith, the IT Director. Mr. Cordes stated that properly. It is a phased approach, and it was unanimous with the team meeting the way we're gonna step into Oracle for 2004. The current proposal represents Phase 1. That'll get us with the current version of the software and support and bring everything up to date, and give us time to look into all the options and how the county needs to proceed for the financials.
Ernie, we talked earlier, and you mentioned something about a contract.
Yes, we'll be contacting the company and working up a contract with them. I've spoken with Yvonne Newton, the purchasing director, and because of the dollar amount, we're gonna look into securing a contract to take care of this. The company we're working with does have a state term pricing, but we will work the contract issue with them also.
Okay. So this'll be... How are we gonna do this? Because I prefer to have a contract before we allocate money.
What I'd like to do is, Mr. Roca C. is going to request certain transfers of funds. That's the only transfer to put in the proper accounts, and I'd like to get a resolution of intent to proceed, and then the contract can come back at a later date, and that would be just merely an administrative issue.
I thought the reason why we're in this problem is because we've been paying without a contract.
Well, we haven't been paying without a contract. That's the least we've been paying.
No, we were for a long time. Now we haven't been paying because there was no contract, right? That's why we stopped? Or is it because it got forgotten?
Go ahead, Ernie.
The support payment issue dropped. There was not support payments being made, which caused us to do much more homework and pull some things together, which generated this proposal. The issue... The support issue slipped, and working with the company, we came up with this proposal.
I asked Ernie this morning to talk to Yvonne about a contract.
Well, the resolution will be just adopting the proposal. You'll need a paying document to follow this. I believe that if we pass a resolution adopting the proposal, that Oracle will reinstate our support and then send us a contract. Is that a fair assumption?
I would think that they would work with this. They've given every indication that they would work with us.
My understanding, this is just so that we can finish up the year.
Correct.
I'm at it.
But this would actually take care of 2004 as a phased approach and give us time to look at all the options that we are also looking at.
Okay, so this is the first step for you to come back with the Commissioners, so we have options on how to move forward, correct? Because there's more decisions we're gonna have to make after this, so...
There will be other... I will be back, yes. I'm looking at a couple of different options.
But this is not committing us to Oracle or anything else. This is just so that we can function, correct?
Correct.
And, Ernie, the issue about the 1099s, can you speak to that, please?
The Oracle support, like I say, the payments slipped. We were in arrears with support payments, and because of that, we were not able to secure a software patch for Oracle that would give us the ability to generate 1099s for year end. This proposal will catch us up on the support payments and also take care of the 1099 problems with the Auditor's Office.
Thank you. I would like to commend Ernie. I think he's done an awful lot of work. He gave, and I'm sure each of you have had access to it and seen it, one, two, three, four, five, six-page report detailing these options and then this proposal this morning. And we've met numerous times trying to seek a resolution to how we should proceed to do business, so I would move that the Board approve the proposal before us from Mythix Incorporated for $250,374.50 and have the appropriate contract documents prepared and the transfers made to accommodate this expenditure for Phase 1 of our computer upgrade.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I hope Oracle... I hope they don't come back. I have assurances that we're not gonna be spending any more money on Oracle until you come back with options for the Board to review on what the future of the financial situation in this county and how we're gonna do our financials is resolved. Is that my understanding?
That is correct today.
Is that your understanding, Mr. Cordes?
That's my understanding, Commissioner Moore.
Okay. I just want to make sure that is...
John? Did you have something?
Let them finish this, and then we'll read that.
Okay, that's all.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
John, did you have something to add?
John has some account transfers we need a second resolution on, so we have the money available for this resolution. Go ahead, John.
Good morning, John Roca C. I'm the Commissioners' Budget Director. This is not monumental. Simply, the point here is to put the money in place in the proper accounts so this transaction may be fulfilled. What it will do is send a message to the auditor and have him process this, and it's to authorize the transfer of $250,376 from account 00101999499601 General Fund Transfer Account to the 001012001400108 Computer Software, and the other portion of $45,150 into the Contract Services Account for software licensing and support for the Oracle system. So what this does, it places the amount of money necessary to have this transaction fulfilled in the account, so the auditor can process it.
Okay. But, Ernie, John is going to know how much we need. I mean, you gave me some estimated figures the other day, and John was in the office when we talked about it. Are you sticking with that? Because he'll need to have some type of figures for the budget.
Yes, the proposal I gave, the quotation that I gave from Mythix Incorporated represents the one we need.
Okay, and you have that, John?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
We've been working together on that quite a bit.
All right, thanks. I will move on your.
Accounting for this transaction.
Account transfer.
One second.
Further discussion? Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
That concludes any remarks of this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis?
I just wanted to follow up, Commissioner, on your one question. Is there going to be any possibility where we would get involved in Oracle? Again, if we don't analyze our options and do anything, by the end of 2004, we will be in the same position at the end of 2004.
My understanding, we should have something resolved before the December 18th meeting. Is that a pretty good?
Progress is being made. Sometimes it's a little bit slower than we would, we want. But given the money involved and the complexities of the relationship with the people involved, I think that we need to expend the time to make good, sound decisions. Ernie, are you going to be ready by December 18th? I thought that sounds pretty quick to me.
That would be relatively quick, but it is possible.
Be a good birthday present for somebody.
There you go again, trying to make us celebrate your birthday. No, you do this every year, David.
That's the only way people know, you know.
Oh, my gosh.
Just give me a head start this year. I'm giving you 60 days.
I'm writing it down.
Once again, I, my understanding of what we did today and what was agreed to yesterday is that we were buying whatever time is necessary to work on this. So I don't want to mislead you, Commissioner Moore, thinking that December 18th, that we're going to have an epiphany and have something in place. I'm not sure if that's completely accurate.
May I just ask, what are you talking about having in place on December 18th? I'm missing something.
Alternative for what the future may involve?
Well, I thought I heard Ernie say that this proposal will take us through the end of this year and into 2004.
Correct. For software support from Oracle, right?
This whole keepers moving along. It will not, it will not take care of the upgrade when we will eventually need to go somewhere with a solution.
Okay.
I think Mr. Commissioner Moore is speaking towards my recommendation, which is still to come.
All right, and you're talking about December 18th to having appropriate money set aside? Is that the issue?
No, no, I just, I just wasn't sure that we were bringing back something that quickly. If Ernie wants to bring something back that quickly, I'm fine with it.
I just don't understand what, why December 18th became magical, except that it's your birthday with somebody playing you cake, eh?
That's a magical day, that's all.
Oh, yeah. Are you going to be here?
Yeah, I'll be here. I can't wait to see what kind of gifts I get this year.
Are you bringing cake?
No, I figure I'm going to get a couple of thorns, but.
You might.
I don't have any other reporting.
Oh. That's what you get, you know. No, I think what, no, what Jerry's saying is, I think is valid. I mean, I think.
We just need to follow up.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
My recommendation, my recommendation is still to come. I'm working on it daily, pushing it along. There's a lot of people involved, a lot of companies involved. I'm working towards the recommendation. I'll do what I can do.
Okay, and Jerry, you didn't say that we have to have this recommendation by December 18th?
No, I didn't.
Okay, I just want to be, I want to figure, okay, I want to, I want to figure out who's on first, so I know what.
I don't know, that's third base.
Whose definition?
Well, no, that's a Evan Cassell joke nobody picked up on, so.
Well, I probably should have, but thank you.
Do you have anything further under your report here?
No, I don't.
He said that about 10 minutes ago.
Commissioner's report? Commissioner Blair?
I think I just better be quiet. Thank you, ma'am, chair.
Okay.
Well, I'll be quiet, too.
Everybody's quiet?
Okay, I have something that NACO reported. And I'd like to move to send a letter in opposition to the United States Representatives regarding a bill that would increase state and local government responsibilities in enforcing federal immigration law, which seems to be gathering momentum in Congress. The Criminal Alien Removal Act, or CLEAR, whose chief sponsor is Representative Charles Norwood, and he is a Republican from Georgia, was introduced in July, has approximately 100 cosponsors already. The bill would take away state criminal alien assistance program funding from state and local governments that do not authorize their law enforcement officers to enforce immigration laws, including civil violations and other violations. Several local governments and law enforcement associations and other groups have come out against the bill. For example, Border Counties Coalition, National League of Cities, the Conservative Union, Citizens for Tax Reform, and the California Police Chiefs Association, as well as NACO. And NACO is the National Association of County Commissioners. And to me, this is another unfunded mandate from, from the feds, sending it down to the state and it's winding up at the local level. And the Yuma County, Arizona Sheriff, Ralph Ogden, said the proposed legislation is counterproductive. What's really needed, Ogden said, are more Border Patrol officers, not local police acting as Border Patrolmen. We each have our own jobs to do. Ogden is a member of the NACO Homeland Security Task Force. And NACO opposes the bill because of the financial burden it will place on the local law enforcement. Federal immigration agents take a 17-week course, and there is no similar training provision. And if training were possible, the federal government would not be allowed to charge state or local governments for training. Or they will be allowed to. So what they're going to do is if there is training provided, we'll be paying for it. The bill also states that training would not be considered a prerequisite for enforcing federal immigration laws. Finally, NACO pointed out that there already exists a mechanism whereby state and local governments can enter into memorandum of understanding with the federal government to perform these duties and that the bill is therefore unnecessary. The MOUs include the training of local agents. So I'd like to have my colleagues' support to send a letter to our folks down at the federal level in opposition to this.
Last week, we had the FTAA issue we dealt with. And that was on the agenda. And that gave me time to study it and get some information. So I would like to wait and at least get some information regarding this issue, since you just brought it up today. So if you got any information from NACO, I'd prefer to read it and see what the issue is.
Okay, I will provide you then.
And we put on the agenda for next week, if that's okay with the board.
Sounds reasonable to me.
Old business? None here.
None.
Mr. Moore?
None.
New business?
None.
None.
Number one, all requisitioned excess requests must be turned in the Purchase Department by 4:30 PM on Thursday, December 4th, to be presented to the Board of Commissioners on December 11, 2003. December 18, 2003, at 9:30 AM will be the last 2003 Board of Commissioners meeting. January 12, 2004, at 9:30 AM will be the organizational meeting of the Board of Commissioners. And then on January 22nd, 2004, at 9:30, will be the first regular Board of Commissioners meeting for the year. Board correspondents?
I hope the reading will be way.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Public comment?
I don't know if you're going to believe, my house is bugged. It's 9/11 presentation coming up, which I want to speak about. My name is Robert Kish, K-I-S-H, eight Cs. Two of the Cs stands for County Commissioners Conscious. That's three Cs. Anyhow, what I'd like to talk about is the fact that when Columbia Gas was notified there was a gas leak by one of my neighbors, they said, "We'll be out in a couple hours." My neighbor's a little like me. He dialed 911. We had three fire engines, two police cruisers, emergency vehicle, and Columbia Gas did come out a lot sooner than two hours. So it's not only who you call, it's who responds. And the response to a citizen's complaint should be heated sometimes. You finally heated after three years complaints that I had had about dogs being stolen. Somebody wrote an article in a newspaper advertising, "Now is the time of the year to watch your pets because they're being stolen and sold." I don't know who that was, but I think we just solved the problem after the Wellington meeting. Because some, there was finally movement of this glacier that has existed for three years. I am here because of Shirley Johnson, Mrs. Johnson, who are watchdogging this committee. Problem with a watchdog is he can only get to that door, but not into it. You can smell, if you hear a duck quacking in there, you think it's a duck, but you're not sure. But if you can see in there, that's a big thing. And I found out that evidently it's one and one, and one and one and one and one eventually came out to the dog pound situation being corrected. If I were running for dog catcher, I don't expect I would be elected. It's an appointed job, but not very responsible in the past. A newspaper recently warned people to watch their pets. Okay, I talked about that. There are others complaining, all nobodies, but they are not in our local newspapers. This article was published in The Plain Dealer on 9/17/03 by Suzanne Hydley. I was handed a copy at the Wellington Commissioners Meeting. That got me involved with it. Not much, but perhaps one citizen can do something. I believe it's appointed. Am I wrong? And do we have a new dog catcher? I don't know. Now, someone else also remarked to me that they do not really want all the people to come out and turn at these elections. I do know, in the past election, two people came up to me, I don't know who they were, and said they were denied the right to vote at their addresses. Somebody had already voted from them. So what's coming up is important. Perhaps you think I trivialize it, but sometimes the only way you can get people's attention, and this has to do with taxes, and it has to do with your vote, whether it counts or doesn't count. Everybody says it doesn't count. I believe if enough people voted, you would see some response. We have got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine people in attendance. I would like to see not only meetings away from here, as we had in Wellington, where a crowd did attend. If we can't do that, can we not have evening classes here, such as the judge has? That's about it, except for the fact you can only pluck a chicken so far. And then you get a squawk out of them. I'm that chicken and I'm squawking. I retired at 52% of my pension. I'm getting less than a controller, I'm getting less than a quarter of my pension now that the controllers get. Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
This is Jimmy Ray Martin again. And I've got a couple of things to say. One of them is for 911. I can't say enough good about 911. I've had a couple granddaughters, I've had a couple sons, and my wife called them at various times, saving my life, taking me to the hospital. They did this again on Friday. I was taken in, put in CCU, kept alive, and had two more heart procedures. And I'm going back in next week for the 20th heart procedure. And my disease is so progressive that I've got them shaking their heads there. And they want to try experimental drugs, experimental procedures, to try to stop this, or I'm not going to be around. My next comments are on gratitude to these commissioners here who have spoke up, written letters to various agencies, the EEOC and everything else, to try to get me help because of what the steel mill did to me a couple of years ago. These issues still have not been resolved. I received an email from my attorney the other day where the EEOC in Washington, DC has finally said they will allow the government agencies that have been involved in my case to review my files, to review the information that my attorney has, to show that the EEOC, the Department of Labor, has been lied to by that company officials in there that have driven it to bankruptcy twice. I'm asking you guys to contact the people on this email, which is a forward email from my attorney, to the EEOC in Washington, to Mr. Greg White in Cleveland, to the FBI that has looked at the case and said that they're lies, but they don't want to do anything about it because it's a civil matter. The PBGC has reviewed eight pages of documents that show that the company lied and retaliated against me for pointing fingers by not giving me my pension and then holding it in front of me four times in February and March of 2003, saying, "If you drop all the charges, we'll give you your pension." And then when the government investigators asked them, they say, "Oh, no, we didn't do that." But I've got it well established, well documented, and the PBGC themselves say that I was violated and done wrong by RTI. Joe Lipinski, John Willoughby, all officials of the company that stand up and say they don't do bad things. I'm asking you, and also in this is a letter from Sherrod Brown. There's two groups of people that have been really strong allies on me with the bad things that that company has done. That's these three commissioners here and Sherrod Brown. Everybody else has kept silent. This letter basically is written to the PBGC, to a Mr. Grant, who is the CEO of the PBGC in Washington, thanking him for reviewing the facts of my case and giving me my lump sum pension, which is on its way. It isn't here yet, and I need it. But they are giving me my pension and paying it lump sum, and that's something that they do not do. Because they found cause to believe that that company could be bad. And I'm hoping that even Mr. Innis there, who has graciously stepped in and assisted me by forwarding things to the prosecutor to actually look at this email and to even ask the Lorraine County Prosecutor to ask for the EEOC to say one little thing. And that's if these allegations are true, to please let the FBI proceed with the investigation. That's all I'm looking for, is justice. They lied. It's illegal to lie. Martha Stewart is being hung out the dry right now because she lied on a money issue, on stocks. Well, this is a lie on more than a money issue. It's, it's a lie of getting caught up in violating ADA and the Finger Pointer Act. And nobody's done anything to these bad people. And I'll pass these out to you. And I hope that you will respond to each individual that this email was addressed to. Because those agencies need to get together and talk to each other. When they get done, I tell you what they're going to find. They're going to find out that RTI in there and RAP has got dirty sheets in their bids. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Robin Jones, Director of 911.
Morning, Robin.
I have Tracy Slago here. She is the 911 supervisor. She's going to help me on this presentation.
Nice building.
Very nice building.
Nice building.
It is a very nice building. We're very proud of it. This is actually the front of the new addition. Lorraine County, 911 is a countywide agency. We do answer all 911 calls placed in Lorraine County. That would include payphones, wireless calls, cellular calls. We serve a population of 274,000 and cover 495 square miles in the county. The 911 network includes 43 police, fire, and EMS departments. These departments cover approximately 35 jurisdictions in our county. So needless to say, it's a very large area with lots of jurisdictions and lots of responders. We, we do receive more than 125,000 emergency calls a year. We are also the contact point for many companies, one of them being alarm companies, poison control, the county dive team, county and fire investigators, Coast Guard, helicopter services, such as live flight, utility companies. And we are also contact for automatic and mutual aid for the majority of the fire departments in the county. We do provide TDD for the deaf and hearing impaired. This also includes hearing carryover and voice carryover, which is something a little bit different than just plain TDD. Usually TDD is they type, we type back. But as everybody knows, there's a lot of people out there that are usually just hearing impaired or speech impaired. So at that point, a person who can talk, they can talk to us, and then we can type back because they can't hear. And the voice carryover, hearing carryover would be the same way. They can hear, so they want us to talk, and then they're going to type back to us. And that would possibly be somebody like a stroke patient who would have that capability of still being able to function one way or the other. We have available a language line which provides interpretation of 140 languages. And we do have a large population of Spanish-speaking people, but we have actually used very many diverse languages. Even for that, we actually, interpretations, even if a police officer shows up on scene and they need help, they can actually contact our department and we will provide help for them to get that information over. Our dispatchers are trained in emergency medical dispatch. We call it EMD. And they are able to offer instructions such as CPR, choking, childbirth. We do have a call here, it's a baby not breathing. I wanted to play it just so you would have some idea exactly how it does work. Go ahead.
I want you to keep the baby's breathing, put your neck to his mouth. Yeah? Can you feel it here, are you breathing well? Okay. Okay, you see the chest rising at all? Okay, I'm going to tell you how to give mouth to mouth. Okay. Just give it under the neck and shoulders and slightly tilt the head down. Yeah? Completely cover the baby's mouth and nose with your mouth. Please, let two soft puffs of air into the lungs, just like you're blowing up a small balloon, okay? Watch for. Watch for the chest to rise with each breath. I want you to do that. Two, please. You see the butt, the butt going in? Yes. Okay, I want you to slide your, like, middle finger as a...
That's just a little clip of it. We won't go through the whole thing, but apparently this baby did live, and I think Tracy did, was acknowledged with some kind of award a few years ago for that call. We do have a fully functional backup facility located at Golden Acres in Amherst Township. So if we do need to evacuate our 911 center, we do have the ability to go to a backup center that would include the 911 system and radios. One of our public education is participating in Safety Towns. We attend many of these during the summer months. One of the tools we use is a 911 simulator, and we do have it here today because it's just very interesting on how we can actually go to Safety Towns and supply this and let kids practice the dial 911. So she's going to demonstrate it for...
We take these to Safety Towns and to any type of functions that we do with children. And what they're able to do is simulate dialing 911. So we have to pick up the phone and actually dial 911.
911 operator, what is your emergency?
So this equipment simulates what they would receive on the telephone when they call 911.
What is your address? Listen carefully and follow my instructions, okay? Good job. You can hang up now.
So we'll actually have each of the kids perform this, and then they have practice dialing 911.
And it feels like they're talking back to a real person on the other end of the line. They don't actually see the little thing that we're doing. So it is a big help, and it does teach children how to dial 911. This is a dedication remembrance ceremony, September 11, 2002. We are very proud of our new communications center, which was finished in 2002. And we just have a few pictures of that event. This is a picture of our old building. This is where we were housed before, and our 911 communications center was in a very small area of this building. Go to the next one. And as you can see here, this is the old part with the new addition. And that first set of windows is actually the whole communications center now, so we have plenty of room. This is a 911 console. As you can see, it's holding five monitors. One is actually a 15-inch monitor, which we need to upgrade to 19-inch. But we do make use of all five of these monitors. They are needed. And I wish we had a before picture, but the before picture, actually, our consoles was only made to hold one monitor. So we really, really needed the room, and we do appreciate it. It has made the dispatcher's life much better that they can sit there in front of all five monitors and be able to take 911 calls and use those as they need them. This is a picture of our wall map. It has come in very handy. It's actually a magnetic board wall map, so we can actually stick magnetics on it to show where there's major fires, major events going on. So if somebody else knows, they can get up and see exactly where it's at. This is a picture of our communications room. This is another side of it, just the communications room, or, I'm sorry, the computer room. But I don't have the before shut, but we were actually in, all this equipment was actually in an area that was probably a four-by-six area. So now we can actually go in there, be in front, be in back, see all the wires without actually causing more problems than what we had to start with. So it has helped us out tremendously, keeping everything up and running. The future for 911, of course, is going to be wireless technology. As it stands right now, our Lorraine County 911 dispatch center does not have Phase 1 or Phase 2. We're actually at Phase 0. We are not provided with any information whatsoever. We must rely on the caller to give us their location, or at least help us find them. Thirty to 60% of all 911 calls come from wireless phones, and this percentage is rapidly increasing. As you know, you see everybody with a wireless phone now.
Robin, do you mean wireless or do you mean cell phones? The wireless, like at home, it's not attached?
We actually, it's more cellular.
Cellular.
When we talk about phones that are not attached at home, they're cordless. They're actually still working off that wire line phone at home. But when you talk wireless or cellular, that means there's no hard wire. It's going to towers. And more and more residents are actually using 911 cellular phones to call 911. We no longer get them from the car, from the car or down the highway. We actually have people inside their houses picking up their cellular phone and dialing 911 instead of picking up their landline phone or their wireline phone. So we see more and more of this. In 1996, the federal government mandated legislation requiring cell companies to provide location technology to 911 centers to help locate these cellular phone calls.
Have they done that yet?
The mandate is there. As I go through this, we'll probably touch on probably what you're wanting to hear. So when I get through, you can ask what you need. Wireless, this is called wireless Phase 1 and Phase 2. As I mentioned, we're at Phase 0. We don't receive any information whatsoever on a cellular phone. Phase 1 is actually going to provide you with a 10-digit callback number of that phone that you're using, and it will also provide the tower site that that call is coming from. Phase 2 will provide a specific location. It's going to be based on X, Y coordinates or GPS, and that will pinpoint a certain area where that call is coming from. And of course, we would still have Phase 1 included in Phase 2 at that point. Wireless cost-recover issues, and that's what you asked me about. There's very few states that have reached above 2% of centers in each state that are utilizing Phase 1 and Phase 2. What has happened, there are funding issues. The wireless companies require funding. We require funding, and there's no cost recovery in place. So actually, everybody has sort of like balked at it, but it is eventually going to get there. What's the next one? One of the problems with wireless technology is the funding. But the state, probably the majority of states across the country have passed some kind of funding mechanism for wireless. The state of Ohio has not done that yet. So we are currently working with legislation in Ohio to get that passed so that the centers in 911 will be able to go ahead and implement Phase 1 and Phase 2 with that cost recovery. Well, and all those, and this technology is going to provide a lot of information that we don't receive at this time, but it is still imperative that callers know their surroundings, pay attention to where they're driving, know whether they're going north or south, know if they're going on what highway they're on, and sometimes just knowing what city you're in or what county you're in will make a big difference to 911 dispatcher in trying to get you help. And that is it. If anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Yeah, Robin, going back to the wireless telephone lines. A couple of weeks ago, we talked about some grants that may be available for E 911 agencies. And when I saw you last time, you said that they wouldn't give it to Lorraine County because we have the levy and we have sufficient funds?
We actually were, we actually provided that when we was looking at passing levies, that we knew wireless was going to be the future, and we set aside funds for that. So at the beginning of next year, hopefully, next year, we will start at least Phase 1 and go to Phase 2. But we do have equipment that needs to be updated, and the state of Ohio is working on legislation so you can get that money reimbursed to you, or at least a portion of that money. But if you go ahead now and start buying equipment that will provide that, you may not be able to get any monies at all.
Same thing that they did with the voting equipment. If you buy it upfront, there's not going to be any reimbursement.
Right. You almost have to wait...
Yeah.
...till you see the funding and then do it, which is kind of like a catch-22 situation.
So how are you dealing with the 911 calls from cellulars now?
We have very good dispatchers. We get the location out of them, and we get them help, just like we do anybody else. We are, did the map, ortho map show up?
No, it didn't show up.
Yeah, we did have a slide in there. It actually showed a centerline map with an ortho layer that we're working with the auditors on, and that's going to be a requirement for Phase 2. Along with 911, you are actually going to have to have some kind of mapping mechanism there so that that wireless will show up on a map.
You might want to explain, too, for the public's benefit, how all the telephone numbers, you have listings and addresses for all the telephone numbers, so they just kind of pop up on the screen.
Right. 911 actually is an enhanced 911. So that means we have a database. You call 911, it actually sees this number, which will then pull up, and we call it an alley, but actually, it's what your address is, your name, and what city you live in, what jurisdiction you're in. So that's what a regular 911 landline call looks like. But with a wireless call, we get a blank screen. We're sitting there with a blank screen. We know it's a wireless call, so we start asking the questions that's going to get us the information that we need from that caller.
Another thing, too, that's interesting with 911 is if a resident has an illness, that address will show up that there's someone there with a stroke or whatever.
We really stopped doing that a few years ago, and the reason being is we don't want to provide information on something that they're going to assume, especially if it's a hang-up call, open line, that, okay, you need an ambulance, so they send an ambulance because they see a stroke patient. And we've actually had screens of information that are not correct. So what we do at this point, we have very few lines that we're capable of accessing. So our main goal now is to make sure that screen of information has the verifiable location of where you're at. And that helps us out tremendously because, especially if you're out in a country, it'll tell you that you're on the east side of 58 or whatever, you know? It'll tell the ambulance service they need to go this way or that way, and that's very verifiable. When you get into medical problems, unless it's something to do with A D D, where they can't speak, where they're, you know, they are in wheelchair, those things are on the screen because that's going to be very pertinent when any kind of provider arrives. But if you have a fire in your house, you know, knowing what kind of medication somebody takes is not going to be very helpful. It may cause an ambulance to show up before the fire department if they was to hang up or something like that because people would assume maybe that...
So that's actually been eliminated.
Yeah. It just wasn't, we didn't have the room for it, and I don't mean to sound morbid, but we would actually have people on there that they had passed away. It wasn't even pertinent anymore. So not being able to keep those up to date daily, get the information that you need daily. I do believe we have over 180,000 addresses in our database, telephone numbers and addresses, and that's a lot. And we actually had, you know, you know, it's a yellow house. They painted their house. It's no longer yellow. So we, and, you know, it was just too much information that wasn't correct in this way. If it's just a location, we can verify that because we know where that should be.
I appreciate that. Is there anyone that has any questions for Rob, Robin?
Thanks.
Good job, Robin.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Grummix, R U M I C S O, Berlin. That was very interesting and illuminating presentation. I do have two, just curiosity, I suppose, questions in a way. I have a friend up the street from me who has multiple sclerosis. Do I understand from what you said that she would be on your database as a possible person needing 911 assistance?
We provide A D A compliance, so if they can't speak, they can't hear, they're wheelchair-bound, not necessarily their medical problem, just no matter who shows up there, this is what they need to know, especially if they, if they're hearing impaired. I mean, that's very important. Fire department shows up, the police department, or whatever. When you start to get into medical problems, if she has a fire, her medical problem, she may not even be there. So we don't want to give that information. Needless to say, you see it on the screen, and they automatically maybe will go toward all of the medical problem, and we're going to send an ambulance person. We don't want that.
Now, I guess I didn't put my question correctly. I thought I heard, from what I heard, that you were saying that, so to speak, anyone in the county with a major disability would be somewhere in your records as a potential...
If they have given us that information, we have flyers that we actually take with us. The fire department's usually hand them out, and they're not...
So it depends on the person telling you about themselves.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's clear. The other question is, it seems to me with all this information in your database, phone numbers linked to addresses and so forth and so on, there might be privacy issues. What kind of security does this information have that it isn't gotten at by people who shouldn't have it?
If you place a 911 call, that call automatically comes in open law. It is now open to the public. There's no privacy connected to it.
It isn't so much the calls you receive as what you have in your databases?
To give out that information, that information would only be seen by responding units.
That's what my question is. Who sees that, and what kind of security protection does it have?
Right. That's only seen by the responding agency. If they call, anybody calls in and says, "I want a copy of this call," the call will go out, but, you know, we usually let people know that it's going to go out. That information is seen by the responding units.
I guess...
Am I not making myself clear?
No, 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 you are. It's my question. Is the database itself secure so that no hacker could get into it? That's what I guess I'm asking.
Well, we hope so. We try to keep it very private. We don't. If it doesn't concern 911 or a 911 call, we do not give out any other information. We don't call, we don't have anybody calling in and say, "I need to know what the addresses to this number." Absolutely not. We don't do it for anybody. We don't do it for the police.
Robin, I don't think that that database is open to the internet.
It's not, oh, no, it's not open to, it's not on the internet. It's internal.
See, it's a secured in-house database, so it couldn't be hacked from externally because there's no connection to the outside.
Thank you. That was what I was trying to ask.
I thought that's where you were going.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Robin, it's a personal question along the very same lines. During the recent blackout, I was lucky that the power came back on. It sort of relieved me because at night I sleep with oxygen generator. Now, if the power had not come back, every place else was closed down, it was after hours. Do you have oxygen available? Because I don't see making an emergency run to the hospital for something like that. I know what I need, oxygen.
Well, we are not the agency that is actually responding, but during the blackout, what happened is we did have numerous calls with people on oxygen. Most people with oxygen, they do have a backup oxygen tank.
I don't, no, mine generates it.
Robin, well, let me help you here. Bob, during the blackout, I was down at 911 and E M Bob, during the blackout, I was down at 911 and EMA, watching some superb folks perform very well for this county. Tom Kelly had some backup plans, should people have called in and needed oxygen or oxygen tanks and so forth. He had some contingency plans that he could rely on to get people out, possibly assist those folks at homes. That would be more function of EMA than 911.
Right, but when you did call 911, we were taking down your number, your address, and we were passing that information on to EMA.
So you should say I should file that with you.
If you think you're going to need-
Well, we have another blackout.
Yeah, if you think you're going to need oxygen, yes, absolutely. And in that way, we will know what kind of plan that they do have in place. We're actually calling EMAs.
The other thing that uniquely came out of the blackout, as just mentioning here, is that people should have a backup phone plugged into the wall with a cord attached to that phone. A lot of people found that all they had was portable phones, land phones, portable land phones, and they weren't able to use them. And they were scrambling to try to find the old plug-in nine dollar in-the-wall phone. And a lot of cellular phones failed to operate because a lot of the towers were down also. But the land phones uniquely were still, were still powered up and working for the most part.
Along that same line, the coin that I put machines, the telephone where you put coins into it, that, of course, being landline, did function. The other phone did not. The other thing I was remiss in mentioning, the name of the man who called in that call. His name is Donald Corn, and he could have prevented the same disaster type deal you've been reading in the local papers that happened in Ramers, Deliria, whatever. Thank you.
Shirley R. Johnson Oberlin, will you please explain how you can handle a foreign language call in an emergency way or a hearing impaired one in an emergency way?
All right, I'll touch on the hearing impaired first. Our system is set up to recognize a TDD call. It actually, when you place that 911 call from a TDD machine, it actually sees that and it will actually clamp, I want to say clamp, it will actually clamp TDD on it. It'll actually let us know, this is a TDD call. So at that point, we just treat it as a TDD call. We ask them the same things that we would ask a hearing person, only it's through typing. The second question was, I'm sorry.
Foreign language call.
Foreign language. We are in a contract with a language line provider. What happens if we have somebody call in, no matter what kind of language it is, we usually have some idea what it is. We actually conference them in with this setup and they actually, we ask them the questions and then an interpreter will give us the answer back. So we're like a three-way conference.
Okay, thank you.
We do not do that ourselves. We rely on people that can speak English.
I just wondered how long you got that service, how fast you could get it.
And it works, it works very well. It's set up because we are in an emergency situation, so.
Okay, are there any other questions for Robin? Okay, thank you.
Ma'am Chair, I'd just like to comment. Sometimes if you're a user, you really appreciate the service. And I think it was about 1996 on Christmas Eve at our house, my then three or four-year-old grandson has, had a seizure. And I knew that you were supposed to call 911 and I did, but I hung up because I couldn't hear a thing. And they promptly called me back. That little boy's about 11 today. He plays softball, baseball, basketball, and he's a wonderful joy to our families. I just want to thank 911 publicly for what you did for our family. Thanks.
Appreciate it. That's why we're there for so.
Dan.
Thanks for coming in.
We have Dan Bilman, Director for Solid Waste District, to give an update to the Board and to inform the public on what it is their department does.
Well, you know, while we were going through this, a piece of litigation came, came to jury and to my attention that I think that we need to take a quick executive session to discuss. So if the Board would tolerate and give us five minutes, I think you need to be made aware of this issue.
Okay, Jim just told us that we need to have an executive session in regards to some litigation that just came to jury's attention. So I would move to go into executive session.
I'll second.
Mrs. Spatter?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
My name's Dan Bilman. I'm the Solid Waste Director for Lorraine County. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm happy to present this overview to you this morning on the update, the Solid Waste Department. Sit back, relax, enjoy the ride. What is solid waste? In the broadest sense, everything manufactured by the hand of man will ultimately become solid waste. This includes the vehicle you came to this meeting in, the papers you are now handling, the clothing you are wearing, the furniture you are sitting on, the building around you, the chemicals, packaging, and shipping containers used to manufacture and transport all the above items. The scrap material generated in all the above process also. Solid waste management before 1989. I'm going to give you just, the next few frames are going to be dedicated to give you an idea of how the district and why it was formed, how and why. Before 1989, there was a varied, everything varied greatly among local governments. Numerous small dumps and landfills were there, no standardization of safety or sanitation, and only occasional attempts by an accounting-wide or statewide monitoring and coordination. It became an early awareness of the problems. The County Regional Planning Commission conducted a major study in 1969. The committee was formed of 60 people from government and industry and private citizens. And they strongly recommended the establishment of a single sanitary landfill for all the They noted that there had to be some changes and the conditions were noted that Lorraine County, in the Lorraine County study, that conditions were often worse in other counties than what we had. And the knowledge of the environment consequences actually grew steadily through the 70s and 80s and got us to where we were at that time. Environmental protection agencies were established at the state and federal levels. And the most imperative thing of all was, in this whole process, was the eliminating of open burning of trash and closing the state's worst landfills. And that forced the, some more material into the remaining sanitary landfills. As a result, sanitary landfill space was quickly becoming very scarce and very expensive. Long, long in 1988, House Bill 592 becomes law. It was the first law in Ohio to address all aspects of the solid waste issues and provide for a true solid waste management system. Major provisions of House Bill 592, it was reorganizing the responsibilities of the state agencies, EPA, ODNR, PUCO, health, agriculture, and the Fire Marshal. It created a advisory council to develop and maintain a state solid waste management plan. It required every county to be a part of a solid waste management district. It provided protected funding for the districts and required each district to prepare and maintain a solid waste management plan. In the solid waste management plan, it would, had to contain at least one county or several counties if the population was low. There were 52 districts formed from 88 counties, and the primary reporting responsibility was to the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency. Solid waste management districts in Ohio are required to prepare and maintain a solid waste management plan for the district. They're also required to collect annual statistics to measure progress towards planned goals. The districts were given wide latitude to develop, promote, and subsidize programs that encourage the concepts of reduce, reuse, recycle. It also allowed each district to collect a fee from the users and/or the owners of the solid waste facilities within their borders. It also provided each district with a permanent and protected source of funds. And it also, it avoids, it did avoid putting additional demands on the tax revenues of the general fund of each county. Lorraine County Solid Waste Management District was officially established as a single county district by Commissioner's Resolution 89-236 on March 21st, 1988. The, and our district is formed as a single county district. It encompasses all of Lorraine County, plus the portion of the city of Vermillion that extends into Erie County. It is governed by a three-person board of directors, who are always the current county commissioners. And the district operates as a fully integrated component of the county government. Staff organization starts at the top with the county commissioners, as they are now, Mary Jo Vasey, Betty Blair, and David J. Moore. Our county administrator is James Cordez, myself, District Director. And Marilyn Plesky as the Administrative Assistant, Sally Pacora as Project Manager, and David McGuire as the Solid Waste Specialist. My responsibilities are to supervise staff operation of the district programs and activities. Give reports to county commissioners and the county administrator. I plan new programs and projects. I also represent the district to local governments, private industry, and professional groups. I provide an interface with the policy committee and many, many other duties. My administrative assistant manages the district financial accounts, and, which is Marilyn Plesky there. She manages the district financial accounts and transactions, helps prepare district budgets and statistical data, oversees staff interaction with other county departments and agencies, and keeps policy committee minutes and other records. She also maintains the district official files and records. Our project manager, Sally Pacora, she oversees all the applications and tracking for ODNR grants. She also develops and maintains educational programs, makes presentations at schools and to other groups. She also publishes a quarterly newsletter for students and teachers. She also oversees collection of recycling statistics for ODNR and EPA reports. David McGuire is our Solid Waste Specialist. He oversees and improves existing recycling programs and develops new ones. Maintain, also maintains the website and the hotline, computers, and other equipment. He also helps on ordering promotional items and publications, and he keeps inventory of the same. He maintains a library of recycled content material and other publications that people can come in and utilize. Our policy committee is a standing committee that is required by House Bill 592. They are responsible for the district's comprehensive solid waste management plan. They have developed the original plan and oversee, and then they oversee the required triennial updates. A review, they also review the district progress toward planned goals and provide input and oversight. Policy committee members are mandated by, and required by, House Bill 592 as follows. One county commissioner, and they serve on a rotating basis, and it's always the president that serves. A representative from the largest health district in the county, which is Lorraine County Health District. A representative from the district's largest city. And a representative of the district's township. One representative from local industry, and two private citizens. Solid Waste Management Plan, the primary guide for all district activities, is developed with the assistance of JT Environmental, which is a specialized consulting firm to ensure compliance with all Ohio EPA requirements. The approval must be done by the largest city and 60% of the total population, the commissioners, and EPA. It must contain a complete survey of current solid waste generation, collection, and disposal in the district, projects future estimates of the same, and sets goals for recycling and waste reduction. It outlines strategies, programs, and projects used to meet goals, and defines broad parameters of activities to promote waste reduction and reuse and public awareness. The plan is written on a 10-year basis, rolling basis, with major updates required every three years. The most recent plan update was given final approval in June 2003. Our income for the district, HB, House Bill 592 allows the district to collect a tipping fee from this landfill operator. The fee is currently $2 for each ton of waste from the county, inside the county, and $4 for each ton of waste coming from outside the county. This chart shows you what our district revenue is for 2001 and 2002. Out of district revenue actually gives us a major portion of our income. District expenses, our community grants, 1.4 million for 2002. Education programs, 290,000. District administration is 274,000. We give health departments 150,000 to, and the HHW collection is 129,000. Scrap tire collection is running about 67,000. The county road repairs are, for the engineer's office, is 50,000. And the electronics collection come out at 14,600. Solid waste management in Lorraine County today, we have organizations which entail manufacturers, retail stores, offices, schools, et cetera. They contract separately for waste removal, but all are responsible to the appropriate authorities for any hazardous waste generated. But the residents are dependent on their local government and on the district for disposal of their waste materials. Commercial and residential sector maintains a rate of 10% recycling. The Ohio EPA would like to see 25% in the state of Ohio for all districts. And that is going to go up another percentage, couple percentage points in the future. In the industrial sector, we consistently maintain a recycling rate of over 90%. Now, you ask why? It's because they have a well-defined beneficial impact on the bottom line. They actually save money by recycling, and some of them do a very, very good job at that. The authors of 592 wisely chose not to contradict the principle of local control over basic services. Thus, the local governments of the district are free to provide solid waste management services to their residents directly or by contract and within a wide variety of configurations. In Lorraine County today, the cities of Illyria and Oberlin have chosen to operate their own collection trucks and deliver waste and recyclables to the landfill and the recycling center, and they pay by the ton. All the others have chosen to contract with BFI for waste collection. Some also use the BFI for blue bag collection, while others have opted to operate a drop-off center. BFI operates a sanitary landfill in New Russia Township. It's EPA-approved. It's rated to accept a maximum of 6,500 tons a day or a total of 1 million tons annually for 2004. And it will go up to a max of 1.4, I believe, in three years. At that rate, the landfill will reach a capacity in approximately 25 years. Recycling center was also built by BFI and it's operated by BFI. It's a central, central collection point for all blue bags picked up in Lorraine County, where the materials are sorted by a series of mechanical magnetic devices and by human operators. The finished materials are baled and then sold into, to the production stream for new The community blue bag recycling grants, they're to be used primarily to defray the cost of the basic recycling program in each local government area, either a blue bag program or a drop-off center. They have also been used by local governments to purchase specialized solid waste management equipment and to fund public awareness programs. The residential recycling programs, which is the blue bag program system, allows the residents to leave steel and aluminum cans, glass, number one and number two plastic, and newspapers at the curbside on a local, on the collection days. This method is used by 24 of the local governments in the district, including the most populous. The residential recycling programs in the communities with smaller and, and/or more widely dispersed populations often find it more cost-effective to operate, thank you. Most, most, often find it more cost-effective to operate a central recycling drop-off station for the residents. Six townships in the district have chosen this option and use their centers both to collect their basic recyclables and as a central point for other collection- collect their basic recyclables, and as a central point for other collection activities. The district either operates directly, subsidizes with grants, or supports, supports in some other ways, a wide variety of programs to collect recyclable materials. We have an office paper recycling program in place for several county buildings. The district has provided collection containers and supplies to numerous organizations to start programs of this nature. The district, along with Sentry Tel, and the local Burger King restaurants, sponsor an annual collection program for, for last year's phone book. The district is working with Abidity, a multinational operator of paper mills to replace, to place, public outdoor collection containers at schools and other locations. Scrap from this program will be made into newsprint at their mill in Ontario.
Shirley R. Johnson, Oberlin. What, what, how, where does the no-burning rule apply? And where is it enforced? I mean, who enforces it?
EPA actually enforces it, but local, on the local level, the fire departments do.
Well, does it apply to all townships? And so, I know it applies in Oberlin, and people pretty, pretty well obey it, but when I see fires out around the countryside, when I'm out going someplace, who's supposed to control that, or doesn't it apply there?
I believe it applies to everybody in the state, whether it's a township, city, resident, or whatever. I would suggest that you report it to the fire department, or the local health department, and the health department would probably refer to EPA if they did, if they weren't doing anything about it. I'm not certain what the process is, Shirley, but you can start with the health department. Okay, sorry about that, folks. Another program we have is Close the Gap Program. Many basic recyclables go uncollected because of where and how they are used. Our program places special containers in areas where recyclables are used, and oversees their diversion into recycling stream. We hold an annual hazardous material waste collection day. It provides residents with method, the only method of recycling and/or disposing of a wide variety of corrosive, inflammable, and otherwise dangerous materials that can accumulate in the home. This shows the, our cost factor on, on the HHW collections versus the tonnage that we collect. It stays pretty steady since 1999. We're seeing it fluctuate a little bit, but not very much. We also hold an annual tire collection each spring. On Saturday, scrap tires are collected, and up to eighteen, at up to eighteen sites around the district, and processed by a state-certified recycler. From 1998 to 2003, this event has averaged over 2,200 tons per year. On the other side, we have a permanent tire collection. We collect tires all year long, and we also pay a certified recycler to maintain the collection trailers at five sites around the county, on a full-time basis. The chart on the following slide illustrates the amount collected at each overtime. The five-year tonnage rate is 652.3 tons. This just shows you the amount of tires that each community collects. Lorraine is the blue one. Illyria is the white one. The next one is North Ridgeville, and the blue one is New Russia. And then, clear on the other, on the far side of the chart is Grafton, which we just got up and running within the last year or so. We have a computer collection event. It was first held in 2002, and the collected, collection was 42,000, 42 tons of material. In 2003, the collection yielded, yielded a total of more than 90 tons. Now, all the equipment is recycled or reused. Our major appliance program, it's an annual event that we try to have, and it allows the residents to drop off large appliances, especially those containing CFCs, which must be removed and recycled. We average over 650 units per year since 1997, and a program is now in development which would provide residents with a call-in system that would pick up the appliances at their location. We also do a fluorescent bulb recycling program, which has been a very, very good program for us. We, it's a significant source of mercury contamination if, landfill. The first trial year, we collected over 33,000 bulbs, and this is a picture of the fluorescent tube recycler, which substantially reduces our cost. And we fill up a 55-gallon drum, and then we ship it to a recycler. We've also partnered with the city of Illyria, and, as part of a coalition of businesses, government, and the district, in an ongoing program to collect mercury-containing items, and thus safely remove their significant health hazard. It's probably telling me this thing's too long.
That goes from last week.
Another district recycling program they have is household batteries. We did a pilot program in ten Illyria schools in April 2003, and collected over a half a ton of small batteries in four weeks. A permanent program now in development and implement, to implement district-wide in Statistics collection, we do annual questionnaires. We send it to most all manufacturing firms and factories, to most commercial stores, school districts, and other organizations. Additional data collected is, is collected from BFI Recycling Center, our district collection programs and events, and recycling companies that are operating in the district. All the information is tabulated and transported, translated into a standardized format. It is compared against the planned goals to measure district progress, and is reported to the EPA and ODNR on a regular basis. It is also retained for use in preparing future versions of the district plan. We have programs to promote reduction, reuse, recycling. Our buy-recycled, close-the-loop program is used to stimulate recycling, and the district maintains an active program to subsidize construction or renovation projects that use new materials made with some recycled content, or the purchase of finished products that are made with recycled materials. Other projects that have benefited from the grants, there's Lorraine Lakeview Park Extension, Illyria's East Falls Overlook, Vermian's Skate Park, Justice Center's Carpeting, Penfield Township Playground, park benches, picnic tables, and playground equipment for many local schools and governments. We also have a revolving loan fund that is going to be up and running very shortly. It's to assist companies or entrepreneurs that process recyclables, or use them to produce a finished product. It will ultimately have $500,000 to use for loans of up to $50,000 each. It will be administered by the district and the county's Community Development Department to better coordinate it with their other business assistant programs. We also do in-room presentations. They're done for all grades. We have library books, videos, et cetera. They're available to all teachers and other organizations. That's in our library. We have seminars conducted to teach the teacher about methods and materials available for reduce, reuse, recycle educational projects. We also do the quarterly newsletter that we send to more than 3,000 students and teachers. We do an annual calendar contest that draws over 2,000 entries of recycling and litter prevention posters from county schoolchildren, of which the annual calendar is back there. You can pick up on the way out. We use ODNR grant funds, using ODNR grant funds, the district stages over 30 assemblies for local schools in 2002. They featured magic and music to teach the concepts of reduce, reuse, and recycle. We also done video commercials, produced in 2002, featured the county commissioners and schoolchildren, and were run on local cable channels. District staff members regularly appear before a variety of community groups to give talks on recycling, and reduce, reuse, and recycle. We reach thousands of county residents each year directly by going to different events. Motheress Sings in Illyria, Labor Day Festival in Lorraine, County Fair in the Fairgrounds in Lorraine County, our Government Day in Midway Mall, and the Apple Festival in Illyria. Our litter prevention efforts, we sponsor a countywide Pride Day. It's sponsored and subsidized each spring by the district, and dozens of local community groups spend a day removing litter, painting, planting, and otherwise improving their communities. And it's one of the, one of our most popular projects. That's a picture of the lake shore. Some of our other efforts include an annual grant to the county engineer to employ summer help to pick up roadside litter throughout the county. And we also have an ongoing program to provide the county parole department and other organizations with supplies used by community service workers in collecting roadside litter. We also have a program that we cosponsor with Ross Environmental, which includes the local 4-H clubs. They paint trash barrels for the county fair with a litter prevention theme, and the winning entries receive a cash prize. And then, all the barrels are used at the fair. Some of our future plans, recycling programs, be a completely revised appliance program, which I spoke of before, a new household battery program, a new printer cartridge program, expansion of our office paper recycling program to outside the county offices. We want to add televisions to computer collections, and also other electronics. And we want to try to make our programs more accessible to all possible participants. In our future plans on litter prevention programs, we'd like to take a more active role in coordinating litter prevention and control activities in the district, expand educational programs and materials available to interested adult groups, place more emphasis on litter prevention in programs at, aimed at school students. Future plans, we hope to possibly get into some new facilities. District's current office space will no longer be available after probably 2004 sometime. There is a need to build a remodel. We're looking into that now, for workspace for our staff. We need more space for our library, storage for supplies and equipment, and a conference room for committee meetings. To more completely fulfill the educational challenge in the district's mission statement, there is also a need for additional facilities, which would be combined conference room, classroom, with audio, video, visual equipment for onsite classes for students, seminars for teachers, and programs for adult groups. An outdoor area is also needed for composting demonstration projects and environmental education walkways. Additionally, public would be better served if a drop-off collection center were available to take in those items, now only collected once a year, such as household hazardous waste, computers, and such a center would also provide a permanent home for our bulb and ballast recycling program, a household battery recycling program, television and small electric, electronics recycling program, and collection of other recyclables or reusable items to keep them out of the landfill. This facility and the programs operated within it would be structured to not compete with local governments, government recycling or collection programs. Instead, it would actually remove some of that burden, and allow them to focus on other needed projects. The district is now conducting a feasibility study to examine suitable locations and calculate the cost of that. The three needs of office space, education, and collection would all come together and be solved together by establishing a REC Center, which is a reduce, reuse, recycle, collection, education, and collection center. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be glad to answer any questions for anybody.
And yesterday, I was talking to Glide, and actually, I was talking about the computer program and the collection, and they are hurting for computers. When they heard that we collected about 40 ton, they were amazed, because they're begging for computers. So, contact them, and also maybe the TVs.
Who was that?
Glide.
Oh, Glide?
Mm-hmm. Because they've got a program where they redo the computers, and, and I think, I think they include TVs in there, too. But there's a lot of technology, maybe some other things that might be available for them to use, and they were just shocked that we're paying for somebody to pick this up when they can use it, and we wouldn't have to pay for it.
Well, that's an advantage we have right now, is that we have some computers waiting to come out to the county for distribution. The problem we have right now is that they aren't, they don't have the software in them. And we're trying to get, I believe it was Windows 98, Windows 98, I don't know. But we, we're talking with ERN, and we're talking with the processor, which was RET. Hopefully, we'll get that together in the next couple of weeks, and we'll be able to actually distribute some of these back into the community.
Well, that's what they're doing, too. They're distributing back to the community. But please talk to them, because they need them desperately. And also, the revolving loan, they're interested in that, and the revolving loan from Warren Twining. There's a need there for that, too. And I want to give you a special thanks to Dan and to Robin for attending, and your staff that has helped with, with putting this presentation on. Great presentations, I appreciate, and I'm sure the public will benefit by knowing what else our county departments do.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to inform you that this past week, I, as the Commissioner's Representative on Lorraine County Visitors Bureau Board, I attended their monthly meeting. I'm sure you're aware that the Visitors Bureau Board has made a request for recycled carpeting in their new facility that they're constructing on State Route 58 in Amherst Township. The request was for $58,478.55. The thought behind using recycled carpeting is that it closes the loop in purchasing materials made from recycled objects. So, I would respectfully request that the clerk carry this request on the agenda next week, for the commissioners to make a decision whether or not we can give them some money, no money, or any money, because they are at a point where they need to proceed with ordering carpeting for their facility, which will be ready, hopefully, in the early part of 2004. So, I would...
Now, is, excuse me, but is the $58,000 for the material, or is, does that include labor? Because we can only...
Dan can speak to that, I don't know the details.
Okay.
The $58,000 is for materials only, but the $58,000 not only includes carpeting, it includes plastic lumber for a deck, it includes some tile. I don't have all the list with me, but it includes more than just carpeting.
Would you be prepared to make a recommendation to us by next week?
Yes, I should, I sure would.
With a funding source, if the board would like to consider that?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move, wager.
Well, is there any comments from the audience?
I'm sorry. I thought they were, I thought they were all talked out. Thank you. I do move, wager.
Okay, I don't see anyone coming up, anyway. I'll second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vasey?
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend. Lorraine County Commissioners, their staffs, and media personnel were treated to another peak at the new Justice Center in downtown Elyria. Ground was broken for the 7th floor facility May 3, 2002.
Down on the first level here, we have mainly clerical areas. This is going to be the main entrance lobby right through here. Got some curious assembly rooms, various offices down on the first floor. As you can see, all the mechanical equipment's well underway. Sprinkler systems, electrical systems are well underway on this floor, and the metal stud wall framing is ongoing as we speak. It's a little congested, folks. I'd like to be able to walk you down through all the rooms, but we've got a lot of work going on right here. But again, this is mainly clerical offices and various administration offices on this floor. This will be open. Be a very nice lobby in the building. Very attractive when it's done.
Public comes in right here at the elevator lobby. This is a very limited access floor. The people going to this floor will be just going to the prosecutor's offices or the other services on the floor. So it's not a public floor. Upstairs, though, will be a public floor. A workstation, a furniture will be in these large, open areas. There are offices that will line this exterior wall when the exterior wall gets built.
This floor area and the last floor area we were on is a good place to look up in the ceiling and look at the amount of equipment, piping, conduits, all the things that when you walk into this finished building, you'll never see again. But that's the heart of the building, and there's a lot of expense and a lot of time that goes into all these systems to ensure that they're proper systems.
Conspicuously missing during this tour was a look at the basement, which will house jail cells and related facilities. Fire safety equipment, heating, air conditioning, and other systems will also be located below ground level. Visitors were told that not much has changed in that area since our initial tour on March 20 of 2003.
What we have in the basement of this building will be the holding cells for defendants coming over from jail or whatever. They have their own two elevators. Behind this masonry mass here, there's another one at the other end of the building. They'll be using those elevators only. There will be no communication between defendants and the public or employees. So this whole front here will be a public lobby area with glass windows, seating. There'll be some hard wall here overlooking the courthouse and the square. Line here will be the courtrooms. There'll be a hallway right down the middle going to that door opening, which is a door opening that leads to the secure holding cell as well as that secure elevator we spoke of a few moments ago that goes down. This area right here, then, is the size of a courtroom. Approximately right here to that wall is the facility for the typical court size. And all courtrooms are basically the same size, except for the one on 7th floor.
Right. That's the logic. That's the logic. The thing, it gets a little less busier as we go. That's quite all right. That's typical. For each trade to come in and do their work, we've got about a two-week turnaround till the next trade comes in. You can see right now, we've got pretty much all the heating systems, fire protection systems are in. Now, our carpenters are starting to build walls and set door frames. Come back in a week, this will look like the other floors. Folks, fifth floor is going to be shell space. It's going to be undeveloped. It's going to be for future use. As Bob had mentioned, the planning that's gone into this project not only goes to just tomorrow, it goes many years down the road. And the projected growth of the community and the needs of this building, this fifth floor will be the spot where it will be built out. More courtrooms, the potential of four more courtrooms in this floor alone.
So again, the space has been provided up to the year 2025 for all the needs for expansion. But again, this will be all shelled out again. There'll be a vacant space. The elevators will run through this floor. Nobody will get off the floor five. It'll be filled up, as the commissioners say. They need more space for officers and rooms.
I just want to see the highest view.
I think it's wonderful.
I especially like the view. The view at the front of the building where you can look out around downtown Elyria. Especially our historic courthouse. I love watching that brickwork every time I come by. There's a few more bricks up. Makes it look real.
Folks, I don't know if you all heard, but on a nice, clear day, looking due east, you can see the Cleveland skyline from this level. It's very, very nice.
This is the top of everything. What you see over here in this shell area is the top of the elevators, the public elevators. This area here is what we call the mechanical penthouse. This contains all the air handling equipment, machinery, things like that, as well as, again, the elevator equipment for the building. The air handling equipment just serves the top three floors. The irony is, when you take people up on a tall building to see the building, they always look at everything else over the building they're on.
Most everyone was quick to express surprise at the degree of progress.
Went along real good.
Plenty of room.
My gravity.
Everyone to hang on.
My gravity.
And the answer to the Project Super's most frequently asked question?
Yes, we're looking at, we're right on our opening day, the summer of next year.